All right, I'd like to, hello everybody. I'd like to call to order the April 25th PZBA meeting at 7:02.
Rock, please, Jeff.
Chairman Kempa.
Here.
Commissioner DeGraff is absent by prior notice. Commissioner Patel.
Here.
Commissioner Seaward.
Here.
Commissioner Riedel.
Here.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Here.
We have a forum.
Perfect. Okay, let's look at the minutes from March 20th and get those approved. Are there any comments from anybody, from commissioners? I just had a couple, there's some telling errors on the first page, I think it should be 300 South Linden Road. And then on page three, work with the residents. And I was, as I was reading through, page three, very bottom.
Oh, I'm gonna take that from you.
Oh, okay. I redlined it. And as I was reading through the minutes, I just had two comments for the board, so one of them is the economic interest, make sure that you guys do all that. And the second one is, we have agreed to support the staff with the chickens, so they have 60 days to prepare their draft to the ordinance. Each one of us could write an email independently to the staff with what we saw and what we think, I think that would be helpful. I don't know where you are with the thing, but we can talk about that.
I will tell you, I appreciate the support, anything you can do, get, we are busiest spring that I've had since I've been here.
Wow, okay, good.
Hopefully, I will find some time to finish drafting.
Well, because we said that we would do it, and I myself didn't do it yet, so that's why, as I'm reading this, I had a little bit of a, yeah, mild headache. Any other comments? If there are none, can I please have a motion to approve the March 20th, November 24th, PZBA meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstain?
I have to abstain.
Thank you. Okay, so, looks like our applicant might be running a little late. So let's, let's jump into the next item, which would be the fraud communication.
Yes.
Oh, wait, there, somebody.
Ah, there he is, ah, that must be, let's see, Delmar.
Good evening.
Good evening. We're just getting started, you're, is Svetlina coming tonight?
Svetlina.
Svetlina, is she gonna be coming tonight?
I'm sorry, she was taken to a hospital for emergency procedure, and they had to leave for a night for observations, so I'll be representing her.
Okay.
And myself.
Okay.
There's another.
Ah, wonderful, we'll go on in just a minute, so thank you, take your time, compose Communications, I will be emailing you a copy of the zoning map for the city, it was on last night's agenda, I was remiss in not printing it today, but there were two significant changes. One was the deletion of the 01 district on Sanders Road, which happened about a year and a half ago with the disconnection of that property to the city of Glen, or Village of Glenview. And the other one was the creation of the new B5 district along Palatine Frontage, those have been updated, there was a couple minor typographical's that were corrected as well. So I will email that out to everyone tomorrow, but that has been updated. Contractor fraud, year number two of the fraudulent paving contractors is upon us. This is typically, it's crews come up, approach the folks on the, out in the yard on a nice weekend day, convince them that they, they can put an overlay code of paving on their driveway for half price for cash if we do it right away, and it usually costs about five times more than going rate, because they, people don't know what they're doing, and they're left with a shoddy job. This year's crew is another set of Irish contractors, very nice young men, present themselves well, but they're driving vehicles all with no identifying marks, all without estate plates, the crew that we caught, trucks from South Carolina, West Virginia, Massachusetts, driver's licenses from Canada, and Maine. Last year, they, we know of at least 15 cases that we documented, and the average scam was over $12,000. And this year, we stopped three of them on one day, because one of the resident who was almost a victim last year, was checking on an elderly couple friend of his, and they saw it happening to them, and he got a hold of us and we were able to intervene. We did write tickets, however, they never showed, and I cannot get proof of service in Ontario, Canada. So they know what they're doing, the biggest thing to do is say no. Why would you entertain an offer from someone you don't know, walking up to your door in the tens of thousands of dollars with no contractor, no guarantee? We do have lists of licensed reputable contractors on file, we don't recommend any one, but if someone requests it, we will send them a list of five or six licensed registered contractors who are doing, have filed all the legal paperwork with the city that they can shop legitimately. And for everyone's attention out there, driveway replacements, driveway resurfaces and expansions are all projects that require building permits, and the guidelines are on the city's website under the Building Department webpage. There was an article in the Daily Herald about a week, a little over a week ago, where they sent out a photographer and we highlighted it, and it was a very strong article, I will be sending that out to the commission as well tomorrow. So the best thing everybody can do is like the neighbor did, if you see something that doesn't look right, speak up, call us. If you see a lot of out-of-state contractor trucks in the neighborhood, it should raise a red flag that, why aren't they here? You can always call the police department, report a suspicious vehicle, they'll just come and check it out and ask the question, what are you doing here? Last year, we had one 89-year-old gentleman get taken for $20,000, they made his property illegal, and it's gonna cost him another 10 to bring it up to city standards. So, it's real money, and it's real injury to real people in our community, so, that's, that's the message for this summer again. So, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to call the Building Department 847, for those listening and watching, 398-6070, extension 211. Thank you very much.
All right. And we covered the Coop County Economic Statement. If we haven't done it, we have till May 1st.
They will lock it down on May 1st, so, the 29th.
Okay.
I actually looked at the email, I never got it.
Really?
Yeah. I'll call it.
But I sent you the information, right?
I look back every year, I've got every year, this is for sure I didn't get it, for somebody.
I'll fill your junk, mine goes in my junk.
I did, mine does.
Okay. So, did you get the email from your, from yours?
The numbers, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
All right, so let's jump back into our new business, which is a PZBA public hearing case number, ZBA 24-05SU. The applicant is Svetlina Dimitrova at ABC Kids Academy, 11-15 South Wolf Road in Prospect Heights. And the request is for a special use permit to operate a daycare center in a B1 zoning district per 5-7-2C code of the city, section of the City of Prospect Heights zoning code. Can I please have a motion to open case number ZBA 24-05SU at 7:11?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We have, we have the applicant, or representative?
Yes.
Director Peterson, do you wanna give us a briefing on this?
Yes, thank you very much. The applicant has presented an application to operate a daycare center at 11 South through 1115 South Wolf Road. This is a site of a previous daycare center, however, that previous daycare center had closed for a period in excess of 12 months, and therefore lost the special use approval. Additionally, this particular applicant is proposing to lease a third unit to incorporate into the daycare center, and has engaged an architect who's representing to her this evening, Mr. Yavor Goranov. Thank you very much, who will speak to the proposed improvements. The B1 district, the daycare center requires a special use approval, that's why we're here. After review, staff does recommend the use.
So, all right. If I could have you, sir, present the case, if I can swear you in, do you swear that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. If you could come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, good evening commissioners, my name is Yavor Goranov, I'm the principal of YKG Architects and Builders in Glen Allen. And I'm here to present you a design for the new daycare center. Svetlina Dimitrova is really sorry that she couldn't attend, she had a great desire to do it, but it was a medical emergency, unfortunately.
I'm gonna interrupt you and ask you to spell your name for the record.
Of course, it's, the first name is spelled Y-A-V, is in Victor, O-R is in Robert, and the last name is Goranov, G-O-R-A-N, like Nancy, O-V is in Victor, Goranov, just the way you hear it. So, I just wanna say a few words about Svetlina. I, I know Svetlina, she's a client, but also a friend, and I did design a daycare center for her, and she has a partner in that one in particular. It's called Sweet Little Angel, and it's located in Schaumburg, Illinois. It's one of the biggest and nicest daycare centers in Chicago. The proposed daycare here, called ABC Kids Academy, is her third daycare center. She has been in this business for over decades, and she loves kids, so she is passionate about that. It's for her, that's not just a business, it's not just about profits, it's, it's about commitment and desire to help families. So, the free, she, she's renting free spaces, 11, 13th, and 15th, here. And the, if you look at the site plan, the, the advantage of, the reason, one of the reasons she is renting the space is because there is also playgrounds nearby, as you can see, and the kids can go from in the back, very safely, forth and back between the daycare center and the playground area. The daycare center, so I, I, the design I came up with, does, will not require any sprinkler system, because every classroom has a direct exit to the exterior at ground level. So there will be proposed three classrooms with different number of children, as per the requirement of DCFS. Everything here is per code, and as I said, this is the third daycare center, so I have already experience in designing those centers. She is really looking forward to this in particular, and this design is actually even better than the Schaumburg one. So, and being at that shopping mall, I think that this daycare center will enhance the area. It's very easy in terms of access for parents, there's plenty of parking, and knowing Svetlina, she will do an excellent job in terms of investment and doing it right, she doesn't do anything less than right. She either does it, or she doesn't. So, if you have any questions, I have, as you can see in my plans, I included the existing layouts and the proposed layout, and also I have a few examples of what the interior is gonna be, and what the playground is going to be in terms of equipment and so So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer, both as an architect and on her behalf.
Okay. One quick question, we have it written here that the operating hours will be Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., do I, do we have that correct?
Yes.
And then, do you, can you predict how many people she's planning to employ?
Well, so the, the employee, it will be about 10?
She did enter, just to clarify, she did in her interview with, pre-application interview with me, stated that she would meet and exceed the state requirement for daycare centers per the age group, because each grade, age group, kids has a different count.
There is a minimum requirement from DCFS according to, based on number of children, but she will, as I said, she does beyond the minimum. Because it's in the best interest of, you know, then kids will be taken care of better.
Any questions for the applicant while he's at the podium?
I have a couple of questions, what is an isolation room?
Isolation room is a room which is used if one of the kids becomes sick during the day. He is immediately taken to that room, and his parents are called to pick him up, so he doesn't keep spreading the virus.
Sure.
To the other kids.
And can you, can you speak a little bit to the playground area? I know in her description, she talks about it being fenced in, and right now, there is a fence in the grass area, but you're showing it incorporating the paved area too, are you expanding that area?
Well, to be honest with you, since the time for submitted was very tight, so I didn't have much time to go and actually measure the exact dimensions, but you're correct, there is a portion which is fenced, then there is like a foyer, so to speak, and then there is a pavement. So, this would be designed and shown on plans in detail in the construction documents for the permit.
Commissioner Seaward, there's basically two fences out there, one that separates the asphalt from the other, that was required by DCFS with the last applicant, so that they had a hard surface for like trikes and bike, and then the soft surfaces for the others.
Right, that's the one that I referenced, like a foyer, because it's, you go through that to go into the soft surface.
And the previous applicant, the previous daycare center operator did install that second fence in the pavement by permit.
Okay, so the area is that governed, the amount of playground areas that governed by the state, like per person, because it's, you're also expanding the, the size of the daycare as well, correct?
There is a certain guidelines, but they're not gonna have all three groups at the same time at the playground. So there will be a rotation, and this way, they will keep the number of kids per guidelines in terms of that playground area.
And then, I don't know, if either the Director Peterson, or, or the owners could speak to the condition of the paving in that lot, I think you're gonna lose some of the kids in the back there in the potholes.
Well, that will all be part of the renovation.
Of the interior space, or?
Are you referring to the interior space?
No, no, no.
No, I'm talking about the condition of the parking, or the driveway, the asphalt.
Oh, the, the, well, this is, this is, will be a requirement for the owner of the property. I am also, personally, when I visited, I was really, I'm really concerned about the states of the roof, for example. The roof is just, is one of the worst roofs I've ever seen, and I've been in this business for over 30 years. And I talked to, I addressed that issue with the owner of the property, and it's all patched here and there, and she said that, you know, those patches come with 10-year warranty, which is absurd, you know? So, I'm hoping that the building commissions here, or inspectors can put some pressure on, because you know how those owners, they only concerned about profits, but we're talking about a daycare center here. So, the condition of the roof is very important, because it could have serious consequences.
So, Director Peterson, is that something that we should add as a condition for an approval, the improvements, or?
Well, that's, that should be.
We can have, we can ask the, we have owners of the building present with us.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
So we can ask them to answer the question.
Oh, I spoke with you, yes.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And if we could have the owner of the building, if I could swear you in?
Sure.
Do you swear that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Ramon, R-A-M-O-N, Solka, S-O-L-H-K-H-A-H, and I'm the son of the owner, Naraman Solka. So to answer your question, the roof is, was assessed and was taken care of last season with appropriate permits and up to standard, so we believe that the roof is actually in okay condition, and it is guaranteed, so if there are any issues, certainly we'll be able to address those. To address your issue around the asphalt, we certainly agree with you that it is of concern. By background, and just a small clarification, the previous tenant was, vacated that space at the end of February, and so that's 11 and 13, and then 15 is part of the, the new proposal here. She had not been paying rent for eight months, I think, at least, and so that's part of our financial strain with getting all of these things sort of done as quickly as we can. We do have an estimate here for patching of the asphalt. Part of the problem that Mr. Peterson knows is that there's a major portion of the parking lot that has pipes from the water company, that have persisted in leaking, I think, three times over the past three years, so every time we've tried to fix it, it leaks again, they come, they dig it up. We had them as part of this process come out again and assess the situation, they have identified that there's another leak there, so that they're gonna have to fix, and then there's a portion that they believe is in our section of the pipe that has to be fixed, so we have a plumber coming this weekend to actually take care of that part as well. So our hope is that with this new tenant and with the beginning of the asphalt, we'll be able to take care of the entire surface area, the entire parking lot, it's in stage over the summer and get everything up to speed. Yeah.
Little history, the city had enforcement actions with the owners, they were taken to adjudication, part of the adjudication was to bring to the roof to a non-leaking condition, and it was not ordered as a full roof repair, but to satisfy that they could patch and satisfy leakage, which they did, that's why it's not a full roof repair. I agree that it is in the end of its life stages, and we've had those discussions with the owners, however, the actual owners, your dad's, what, 95?
95, just turned 95.
95, and it was not taking, doing a lot of care at the time, so the son and daughter, the two sons and the daughter have been taking over putting a plan, but because of that, there also has been limited resources.
Yeah.
But to address the roof, that was specifically addressed as part of a enforcement action.
Yeah.
The asphalt, I walked the property with Anna, Ramon's sister, who has been acting as the manager in the interim, and identified, and we have reached out to Illinois American Water, they have not been very forthright or direct with any answers on when they're gonna repair their damages. So a lot of it are repairs that they have to do because of the extensive main breaks, they have identified and marked the pavement in various areas, they've even added more markings since I was out there last time with Anna directly. It is something that I believe we should put on, because the war mandate that they walk the students along the front line and across to the other side, away from where the areas of those extensive damage, but it's well worth stating as a condition that the owners are responsible for maintaining and bringing the property to safe condition.
Any questions from commissioners? There are not, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
There's no other comments, I'd like a motion to close the public hearing case number ZBA 24-05SU at 7:30 p.m.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Any discussion that we need to have, it's a well-presented plan, I think the condition is great, I mean, we want the kids safe. Any additional comments from any, from, from the commissioners? No? All right, if there are no comments, then I'd like a motion to add to the public record the evidence presented this evening for case number ZBA 24-05SU at, again, 7:30 p.m.
I'll make the motion.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now I'd like a motion to recommend to the city council approval of case number ZBA 24-05SU, which is a request for a special use permit to operate a daycare center in a B1 zoning district per section 5-7-2C of the City of Prospect Heights zoning code, with the condition that owners bring the property to safe operating condition.
Bring the property, or the parking?
The parking, the area. I would say the paved, the paved, paved area behind the building at this time, that's the, that's the path that was stated, correct?
Okay.
They have done patchwork in the front for parking, so the parking's not unsafe, it's the area in the back, that the, the accessway, alleyway.
Okay.
Are we gonna say to what degree?
Are we going to say to what degree?
It's got a, it's, it's hard, they need to resurface that asphalt in the back, in my opinion, is past its useful life, and with that, there's also been significant damage that was caused by the water leaks that heaved the area, so it does have to be milled, taken out, leveled, proper, but it has to be done right, by intercourse.
And also garbage.
And then, we've talked about making sure the garbage cans are on better spots, that they have better, and it's cleaned up, the owners have assured me that they will have a maintenance guy cleaning up, or the owners, and finding the owners appropriately, if not, so, Ramon, you had a question?
I was just going to say that we have, we have our, sorry, and we have the estimate, which I'm happy to include, have you even done this copy?
Yeah.
Yeah, of the proposal for the asphalt repaving in the back, so we're just waiting for the Illinois Water to finish its work, and then we'll be able to go ahead and do all of that work in the back.
Did Illinois American Water give you a date or timeframe?
Can we see that proposal?
Of course.
Ramon, also picture.
Yep.
Which part is going to show?
This is just this picture to show in the area behind that is inclusive of that.
There were a number of heaves, there were a number of asphalt, actual separation, almost like a fault line, and back there where it heaved, there was also where soft asphalt and dirt and water came up, so, I'm glad to hear you got a quote, I'm glad to hear that you're going to address it.
And I can assure the commission, you know, that we are as concerned about the state of the parking lot as well as all of you are, and frankly, we've just had a major tenant who was not paying rent for eight months, that we had to go through an eviction process, and she owes us a considerable amount of money, and that's the capital that we need in order to do this. With the new tenant coming in, we'll be able to get this work done, certainly during the course of the summer here, and start with the, you know, safety area, and our intention is to go in phases to get all of the parking lot repaved.
This is a question for Yavor. In your opinion, the work that you're proposing on the renovation?
Yes.
Approximately, how long do you envision all that work for the remodeling of the space to be done?
That will probably take three to four months.
Three to four months?
Yes.
So, the opening of the center cannot happen until that remodeling is done, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And the reason for my question is, is to establish a timeframe that during the course of their renovation, it's incumbent upon the ownerships to correct the conditions of the property, and I just want to make that for the record.
Okay.
Is the paving only here that needs to be repaired?
There's, we will, we will work with the owners on the locations, because there's multiple spots, there's multiple, some areas are worse than others, some are still probably viable, but the majority of it back there is not.
Do we want to include this as an exhibit?
We can add it as exhibit.
May we keep this?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Have you guys used this company, Alley, before?
I'm sorry.
Are you familiar with this company, Alley?
Yeah, they're the Irish.
I was just going to say that not Irish.
Yeah.
There's not a picket line.
I haven't heard of them, that's why, that's why.
That would be, that would be exhibit, we're going to add as owner, or applicant exhibit number eight. That's the, I lost too much.
Okay, I'm going to make this as one exhibit.
Got it.
Okay, do we need to read the motion?
No.
No? Okay.
That's fine.
All right, let's try this again. Can I please have a motion to recommend to the city council approval of case number, ZB A twenty-four dash zero-five-SU, with the condition that the owner bring the rear section of the building back to the safe condition, per proposal outlined in exhibit eight?
Prior, prior issuance of occupancy.
Prior to the issuance of occupancy, yes.
I'll make the motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Commissioner Reigel?
Aye.
Commissioner Myszewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Sayward?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Chairman Kumpa?
Aye.
Okay, so this will go again?
This will be up to the city council for first reading on May, I believe, I don't know, there's my calendar here, there it is, May thirteenth, Monday night, May thirteenth. We'll be here at six-thirty PM, if something that can be here, that would be great, if not, Yavor. Thank you very much, Ramon and Anna, we will make sure that we get all the permits and stuff on file, and we get the things, and we will be more, my public works director, you know Mark Ross, though, he's been out at the site, he can meet with you to discuss area.
Yeah. If I could just, parenthetically, we also, I think, would benefit from a call with flood brothers, just to discuss what we talked to them about, which didn't seem to be in alignment with what you were asking for, so we'd just like to get a conference call with all of us.
Not a problem, we can do that.
Thank you for a nice presentation, and good luck to Svetlina with her health issues.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Covered everything? Can I please have a motion to adjourn at seven-thirty-eight?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you.